Mr. Medder.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Here.
Ms. Hart. Ms. Matlock.
Here.
Mr. Thompson. Ms. Page.
Here.
Okay, we do have five of our six council members here this evening. In the event that Councilmember Thompson does not make it, then I will be voting on matters that come before the council this evening. And if Councilmember Thompson shows up, then I will refrain from doing that. At this time, we'll have our invocation and pledge, and I will be leading up this evening. If everyone will please stand. For Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening to assemble as a council, to represent the citizens of our great city. And Father, I ask that you guide the council this evening as we make decisions and as we conduct business on behalf of our citizens. We'd like to ask that you provide everyone here safe travels back to their homes. We also ask that you be with our city employees who work each and every day serving our citizens, that you will keep them away from harm's way, that you will keep them safe, and we ask that you forgive us from our sins. We ask these things in your son's precious name. Amen.
Amen.
If you'll please face the flag and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. May be seated. In reference to our upcoming council meetings, our next council meeting will be held on Monday, October the 13th. Let me ask once again, can everyone hear me okay? It seems like it's not, the microphone's not projecting. If not, let me borrow this one over here. Is that better? Okay, I don't think my microphone is actually working, so I'm going to go ahead and use this one. And if Councilmember Thompson shows up, then I'll do something else. So anyway, once again, our next council meeting will be held on Monday, October the 13th. And then following that, our next council meeting in the month of November will be held on Monday, November the 10th. Both of those meetings will be held at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. In reference to Parks and Recreation activities, on September the 30th, excuse me, September the 13th, the 20th, the 27th, October 4th, and 11th, we'll have Baseball Association of Texarkana Fall Ball. Those games will be played at Swanger Complex. On September the 27th, we'll have the Nukes Run Till There's a Cure 5K Run, and that will begin at 7:45 AM at Spring Lake Park. October the 2nd, Durskin Hospice Senior Day Out will be from 9:00 AM until 1:30 PM. That will be at Spring Lake Park. And then October the 9th, we'll have Movies in the Park, and the feature that evening will be, is it Lilo or Lilo? Lilo, excuse me, Lilo, short eye. Lilo and Stitch. You can tell I'm not familiar with that movie.
It's in change.
I will be, okay. At 7:00 PM, and that'll be held at Spring Lake Park. And then also on September the 23rd and the 30th, and October the 7th, we'll have our Farmer's Market from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and that will be held at the Southwest Center. And additional Parks and Recreation information can be found on the city's website, or you can feel free to call the city. And before we move along to our Texarkana Homeless Coalition, just want to pass along a quick personal note. We have had kind of a stressful situation in my family the last couple of months. My daughter Olivia was pregnant expecting twins, and I'm pleased to say that she did have the twins on Sunday, August the 31st, which happens to also be my brother's birthday. And so Margot and Winley have arrived. Margot weighed four pounds, six ounces, and Winley weighed three pounds, 11 ounces. So they're a little small, they're a little early, but they are at UAMS in Little Rock. And so Olivia was discharged last Tuesday and has made several trips up there with her husband, my son-in-law Caleb. And so I just ask that please continue your prayers for them and my family. And there's been so much of an outpouring of support from our community during this time, from my church, members at my church, as well as the community, and a lot of people that I've made contact with. And so I just want to thank you all very much for the prayers that you have offered up and the blessings that we've been blessed with. And we certainly hope that those young girls grow very quickly and are able to come home fairly soon. So once again, thank you for your thoughts and prayers. This time, we belong to our Texarkana Homeless Coalition. The Texarkana Homeless Coalition will host its Fourth Annual Resource Day on Thursday, September the 18th, from 8:00 AM until 2:00 PM at the Crossties Event Center at 324 East Broad Street, Texarkana, Arkansas. And this important event connects undeserved, underserved, underserved community members with local services, offering direct access to resources that support stability and well-being. We will have our Fall Sweep Cleanup that will be held on Saturday, September the 27th, beginning at 8:00 AM. And this is a part of the city and in conjunction with Keep Texarkana Beautiful. And we have various locations where the staging will be taking place for this cleanup. Volunteers will help with trash cleanup, debris removal, gardening, and park improvements. Roll-off locations for waste disposal include the Beverly Community Center, located at 901 Lumpkin Street, the Scholars Center, Rose Hill, at 1303 Milam Street, Bell Park in the Newtown Community at 1801 Dodd Avenue, Finley Park, which is in the Liberty Isle area, at 410 Finley Street, and the Freedom Grace Fellowship, which will be in Highland Park at 2401 Hazel Street. And for more details to volunteer, you can contact Vashil Fernandez with the city at 903-798-3904, or vashil.fernandez@texarkanatexas.gov. At this time, we'll move along to our open forum, comments from the public. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the council this evening, you'll be welcome to do so. You will have up to five minutes to speak. And if you're here this evening to speak on behalf of one of our public hearing items, if you will please wait until we get to that particular item, we'll be more than happy to listen to your comments at that time. Ms. Evans, do we have anyone, excuse me, to sign up to talk this evening or speak to the council? Okay, if anyone wants to address the council, if you'll please come forward and state your name for the record. Okay, not seeing anyone coming forward. We'll now move along to appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Do we have any appointments to boards, commissions, and committees this evening?
Yes, Mayor. I have a new appointment for an alternate position on the Historic Landmark Preservation Committee, Jan Goodson. For the alternate.
Alternate position, okay, very good. Are there any others this evening? Okay, thank you, Councilmember Page, all right. Is there a motion for approval of this one citizen that's been nominated? Is there a motion for approval? Motion by Councilmember Davis, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Matlock, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. So thank you for this young citizen, what's the name again? I'm sorry.
Jan Goodson.
Ms. Goodson, all right. I want to thank Ms. Goodson for her service to our city. At this time, we'll move along to items for consideration in reference to consent items. Item number one is to consider approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the city council held on August the 11th, 2025, at 6:00 PM. Item two is consider approval of the minutes of the budget public hearing of the city council held on August 25th, 2025, at 5:30 PM. Item three is Resolution Number 2025-131, approving purchase of new playground equipment for Cetopia Park with funds budgeted in the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Fund 204, in an amount not to exceed $109,440. Item number four, Resolution Number 2025-134, authorizing the city manager to sign an addendum to the contract with Kamau Tusei Architecture for the Perro Theater Project, including Schiller Shook design fees related to the sound system, lighting, rigging, and other improvements in the amount not to exceed $370,550, with funds budgeted in the 2023 Bond Fund, Fund 426. Item number five, Order Number 2025-135, for the city council receiving and accepting the certification of unopposed candidates, Councilmember for Ward Four and Councilmember for Ward Six, ordering cancellation of the general election to be held on November 4th, 2025, and certifying as unopposed and hereby elected Kristy Page, Councilmember for Ward Four, and Jay Davis, Councilmember for Ward Six. Item number six, Resolution Number 2025-136, approving the installation of a historical marker honoring the Freeman Curtis Expedition in Shepherd Park. Item number seven, Resolution Number 2025-145, approving an intra-local agreement with Bowie County, Texas, governing the levy, collection, and apportionment of certain Texas alcoholic beverage code fees affected by the Texas Health and Safety Code, Section 437.01235. Item number eight, Resolution Number 2025-146, supporting the submission of an application to Texas Defense Economic Adjustment Assistance Grant Program, DEAAG, to support improvements to the Riverbean Water Treatment Plant. Unless a council member would like to pull one or more items for further consideration, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as it has been presented. Is there a motion for approval? Did I miss one? Well, those are action items. Is there a motion for approval? Motion by Councilmember Page, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Matlock, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The consent agenda has been approved. We'll now move along to our action items. We do have two items this evening on our agenda. Item number nine is Ordinance Number 2025-120, amending the budget estimate of the revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2025, and adopting the budget and appropriating resources for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2025, and ending September 30th, 2026. And council, this item will require a roll call vote. Ms. Evans, our city secretary, any comments on this item? Okay, all right, very good. All right, any questions or comments by the council? Okay, if not, is there a motion for approval of the ordinance? We have a motion by Councilmember Hart, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Page. Ms. Evans, the caption, please.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Texarkana, Texas, amending the budget estimate of the revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2025, and adopting the budget and appropriating resources for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2025, and ending September 30, 2026. Fleet capital replacement purchases and authorizing the city manager to make certain purchases authorized by law, approving capital improvement plan projects, and authorizing the city manager to incorporate projects into execution of the annual operating budget as funding is available, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith to the extent of such conflict, containing a severability clause containing a superseding clause, providing for publication and establishing an effective date.
Evans, roll call, please.
Mr. Medder.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Matlock.
Yes.
Ms. Page.
Yes.
Mayor Brugeman.
Yes. So the ordinance passes unanimously. We'll now move along to item number 10, Ordinance Number 2025-133, discussing and considering all matters incident and related to the issuance and sale of City of Texarkana, Texas Tax Notes, Series 2025, including the adoption of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of such notes and resolving other matters incident and related thereto. And Kristen Peoples, our city CFO, will provide information to the council in reference to this item. Good evening, Kristen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Jason Hughes. He's with Hilltop Securities to discuss the issuance with you.
Good evening, Mr. Hughes. We're glad to have you with us this evening.
Mayor, thank you. Councilmembers, good evening. Good to be with you. You have in front of you a one-page summary, so very, very short. What we did is we put this out for what's known as a private placement. So we put out a term sheet basically to local, regional, and national banks, asking them to provide us a bid for those tax notes late last week. And so we did get four bids for the tax notes. As you can see here, the final par amount that we're looking for your approval of 1.5 million, just over $1,463,000 to the city in project proceeds. 3.52% interest rate. So assuming your approval tonight, all of this will go down to the Attorney General's Office of the State of Texas. His office reviews all public debt offerings. And so that's roughly about a one-month process that he takes to review that or his office takes to review that. So assuming approval tonight, we are scheduled to close October 8th. That's when you'll have the full amount of funds in the bank. You can see below that, there's no funds coming out of your general fund to pay costs of issuance or anything like that. This is all self-contained. So all of the professional fees are included in the tax note issue. And then, as you can see down at the very bottom, this is a two-year tax note with the vast majority being repaid next year. So I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Mr. Hughes and the council? Certainly appreciate your time and effort putting forth, helping us with this. So thank you very much for being here, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Very good. At this time, is there a motion for approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Davis, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Medder. Ms. Evans, the caption, please.
Ordinance authorizing the issuance of City of Texarkana, Texas Tax Notes, Series 2025, specifying the terms and features of said notes, levying a continuing direct annual ad valorem tax for the payment of said notes, and resolving other matters incident and related to the issuance, sale, payment, and delivery of said notes, including the approval and execution of a paying agent, registrar agreement, and a purchase letter, and providing an effective date.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. The ordinance passes unanimously. We'll now move along to our first briefings. Item number one is Ordinance Number 2025-132, amending Chapter 26 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Code of Ordnances, establishing street safety zones at signalized intersections, amending Section 26-2 definitions and adding Article 4, Street Safety Zones. And we have with us this evening our Assistant Police Chief, Mr. Sean Fitzgerald. Good evening, Chief.
How's everybody doing?
We haven't seen you in a while.
You know, I don't know what to say. I'm here.
You must be behaving, then.
I'm trying to behave, as best I can.
Okay.
I sure appreciate your time. As you're well aware, we have an issue in Texarkana, Texas with a very large amount of traffic collisions and crashes. But what you may not be aware of is the significant number of fatalities that we have with regard to these same crashes. So we're going to talk about a couple of things tonight. I'm going to show you some slides of some maps. You're going to see some significant landmarks, and we're going to be talking about something called signalized intersections. So think of it like any intersection that has an electronic control device, traffic control device, a red light, okay? So you'll see maps of that. And then what I'm going to do is I'm going to walk you through the years 2019 through 2024 for the most of the presentation real quick, and it's not going to take long. And you're going to see some overlays of maps of where our crashes are occurring as it pertains to those signalized intersections. And I'm going to give you some really staggering statistics with regard to both pedestrian and pedicyclist injuries and fatalities. So if you'll just bear with me, we're going to start off with pedestrians, because that is one of the biggest problems that we have and what we're seeing right now. And I'm going to give you some very relevant information regarding that. If you'll notice, we had 116 crashes between January of 2019 and December of 2024. 116 involving pedestrians. And of those 116, as you can see on your chart, we had 108 injuries, and these injuries range from severed limbs to broken bones. There's really no good outcome when it comes to a pedestrian versus a vehicle crash. And then of those, we had 11 fatalities. That is, in our opinion, and when we look at that, that's very concerning. And so we have to look at, and from our perspective, we said, what can we do to mitigate that? What can we do to reduce those fatalities and injuries? Because, you know, when we look at the number of vehicles that are in our city each and every day, I mean, we're a feeder community, you know this. They come here to shop, they come here to eat, they come here for medical care. And so we've got to do something, because I don't, I think we're to the point where doing nothing is no longer an option for us. And so next, we're going to look at pedicyclists. If you'll notice, we had 37 crashes involving pedicyclists over the same time period. And of those, and what's, if you'll notice, in both categories, it's almost 100% of the time, not quite there, but almost 100% of the time, the number of injuries is almost equivalent to the number of crashes that we have involving both pedestrians and pedicyclists. And we had two fatalities between that same time period from 2019 through 2024 for the pedicyclists. So statistically, what we're looking at now is, and this is where it comes into play with pedestrians, 44%, on the next screen, you'll see it, 44% of all fatality crashes involve pedestrians. And that's every crash. And you're about to see some numbers of the actual number of crashes that we have on an annual basis. 40%, 44% of all of these fatality crashes that we have involve pedestrians. So I think, you know, when you're looking at that, that kind of step, that, I mean, that, for us, is eye-opening. And of that, the pedestrian fatalities, they've actually tripled since 2023. They're on an upward trajectory, and as bad as they are, it's hard to imagine that they could get worse. And then, of course, you look at the pedicyclists, and those numbers, it's not quite 100%, but of all the pedicyclists involves, 89% of them are going to involve at least an injury, and 5% are going to result in a fatality. So I have a map for you. This is called a heat map. And if you'll notice on your screen, these are the, where all the pedicyclist and pedestrian fatalities occurred. And if you'll notice on the top, on the northern part, you have I-30. It's kind of being your northern most boundary. You have the loop, which is 369 on your left, and on your right is state line. And then to the south, you'll see Southlake Drive. I need you to, that's the perspective. That's pretty much our city in a nutshell. So, and it's going to be very relevant moving forward on the next maps that I'm about to show you. So this is a map of all of our signalized intersections. Remember, just controlled by electronic control devices, not just a stop sign. So and if you'll notice up there, we have in gold is the primary roadways. We have 67, which is Seventh Street. You have 369, which is the loop, state line, and then I-30. And if you'll notice those blue lines on I-30, that, you see how it follows Richmond? It just goes in a straight line right up north. And that's so you'll understand the perspective about what you're about to see. The heart of the city is there, obviously, between south of I-30 and east of the loop, and just a little bit in north of US 67. This first map you're going to see are the crashes from the year 2019, which was about 427. And that's about what we average. We average about 400 crashes per year. 427 in 2019. Now, bear in mind, every screen that's going to follow, we're just going to add on to these existing crashes. And I want you to, in the perspective of signalized intersections versus where our crashes are occurring, you're going to see a direct correlation. So that is 2019. So 20, moving into 2020, we have just a slight decrease of 407. But again, nothing much has changed. You're seeing the same locations in the same areas of the signalized intersections that we've already presented. 2021, it goes up a little bit to 445. But again, you're seeing a little bit higher concentration in the same areas. We cannot put a dot for every single crash that we have, because we wouldn't have enough room on the map. So in many instances, a single dot may represent 20 crashes, if that makes sense. You know, they're just not, unless we were to enlarge that map, you know, 20 times real time. The other thing to note is, in 2020 and 2021, we were during the COVID era at that point. And there was a portion of time when we were shut down as a city. And really, you wouldn't think that we had much traffic going on at all, but that, the statistics will show quite the opposite. So moving into 2022, we're going to see a little bit of a decrease. And then moving into 2023, again, we're still in the area of the 300s. We're creeping back up to 400. And again, the dots speak for themselves. And at the end, I'm going to show you, we're going to go back and forth between the signalized intersection screen and these. And so moving into 2024, again, we're creeping closer to 400 again. And so now you see a very, very heavy concentration of exactly where we saw those blue dots, and you're going to see them here again in just a second. And then for 2025, when we took this poll and we took this sample, at that time, it was the first of August, we only had 250 crashes up to, in 2025, up to the first part of August. I can tell you the official number for August is 299, and that is 299 crashes from January 1st to August 31st. And if this holds true, we'll end up with the year of 433 crashes in the city. So Jennifer, you'll go to the next slide just real quick. Signalized intersections, and go back to that previous screen. And the crashes where they're occurring. The spirit behind this ordinance is we recognize that there's a problem, a significant problem. And in the absence of doing nothing, which I don't think is an option for us anymore, we can do directed enforcement, which we most certainly do, but realistically, we don't have enough officers to be at every problem intersection in our city. We just simply don't. We have a traffic unit. Sergeant McAnally is the head of that traffic unit. But there are things that we can do, and that's, we're asking for your help in helping us out on this deal. Fatality accidents are the worst that we're called to work. Many times, it is, especially when speeds are such, even at 45 miles an hour, it's a disastrous result when it comes in contact, when a car comes in contact with either a pedicyclist or a pedestrian. So that's where we're at. I'm open. Any questions before I turn it over to Jeff?
Questions for the chief? Very good report.
Thank you so much.
It really kind of gives us a good perspective.
I got a question.
Okay.
We are, just so you'll understand how we, our traffic functions and where the intersections we focus on are completely data-driven. Like, but if we do receive a complaint, if we do have an issue where, like someone such as yourself addresses that with us, we'll pay special attention to that. We'll do what's called traffic surveys, where we can, one, determine the number of vehicles that are going through at a certain amount of the, you know, a certain time of the day, and really depending on where it's at, and, two, the average speeds. And, three, we're just observing at that point, we'll observe any traffic violations that occur so we can look at it from an analytic standpoint and determine what action would be best to take it, like in that particular intersection right there. So I will certainly take that down and take it under advisement. The good news is, you have the traffic sergeant in this very room tonight for the traffic unit. And he can, he's right over there in that corner, right behind you on the other side, right there. And if there's a problem, we want to know about it.
And also pastoring, of course, McKnight Road is a state-operated highway, and so there would be some involvement with the state on that concern as well, so.
I'm surprised that you hadn't gotten any accidents at TISD, at Texas High, as all those parents pick up at the Dollar General and...
We've been, well, this year, we've been deliberate on, as far as the school districts, we've been very deliberate on following the school buses, because the largest number of complaints we have are people disregarding the stoplights on school buses. And so we've been very intentional on that one so far since school started, so.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate that report. Very, very important and very, very timely. Good evening, Councilmember Thompson.
Good evening.
I am, I am borrowing your equipment, okay? So I have your microphone. Mine isn't working, so if you want to say...
Honestly, I don't need a microphone tonight.
So you can't say anything, all right? So, no, if you need to say something, just alert me and I'll hand it over to you, okay?
All right.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, just a little housekeeping item to take care of this evening, so. All right, council, item number two has been tabled. We have some new requirements as far as posting the, posting the agenda. I'm sorry, Jeff. I'm sorry, we're not through with, we're not through with one. Maybe back up. Item number one, and our city attorney, Jeff Lewis, would also like to provide some input. I'm sorry, Jeff.
No, it's a tough act to follow from Chief Fitzgerald, but because our street safety zones on what the council can do. We know there's an issue. It's not just us. You can see national data that has been recopied into the ordinance format. Even Texas Dot, a few years ago, issued a Be Safe, Drive Smart campaign, specifically addressing pedestrian safety, also addressing driver distraction. So we have a focal point of pedestrian safety, driver distraction. And as we look at the particular national information that informs our local, when we look at the signalized intersections, it's an alarming statistic that out of the nation's 3 million intersections that are signalized, even though only 10% of those signalized intersections, we have 1/3 of all intersection fatalities at those locations. So that's a remarkable number, highlighting the significance of the interactions that occur at signals. The ordinance draft does present a typical roadway scenario using various concepts that... we may all remember from driver education. You take the scenario of a 40 mile per hour driver approaching a signalized intersection, and the light starts to turn red. There are a number of concepts that are incorporated into the design of that intersection, but those design concepts address the driver reaction coupled with the speed and the braking distance. In our particular scenario here, when you look at the 40 mile per hour situation, you have a braking reaction distance where the driver identifies need to start slowing down. That's 147 feet. Then the braking distance itself, you add to that 153.6 feet. Those two, well, the SSD, the stopping sight distance of 300.6 feet or rounded for design to 305. And then apart from all of that, you have the decision sight distance, distance required for the driver to figure out what's ahead of the driver, what traffic's coming, what traffic is stopping, and making decisions as approaching that intersection. Given those particular metrics, we have a number of signalized intersections that certainly involve 40 miles per hour. I have a couple outside my office that are at 50 miles per hour, wish it was slower. When you have slower times or slower speeds, you also have more reaction time. So we use this 40 miles per hour as a benchmark to determine what can we do with our signalized intersections. The proposal is to create a uniform 200-foot street safety zone from the central point of each intersection, extend outward. Uh, the zones will end when public right-of-way ends. It will not extend onto product, property, and when you consider state line, it's not going to extend across the state line. Nevertheless, it gives some clear guidance for police, for enforcement, for drivers to understand, and for pedestrians to understand. There are areas within the city that are designed for driving, that are designed for traffic. They're not designed for, example, parking vehicles. This is an effort to make sure that these intersections remain as clear as can be made so that drivers have clear line of sight when they approach, so pedestrians know that they need to cross streets and move along. And so people understand, these are areas where this council has determined. If it's pedestrian versus vehicle, pedestrian always loses. These are not safe places to be outside of a vehicle. If you have to be outside of a vehicle, then please move along, get out of there, so that you're not subject to perhaps anything that might go wrong, whether it's a driver losing control, or brakes going out, or some other issue that may occur that leads to the numbers and the statistics that we have already presented. In this context, what we're trying to approach here is that, with respect to the 200-foot radius, we have ordinance provisions that will address, if I can get to it, in section It's a very simple approach. It's an offense if a person is within the street safety zone. To be sure, there are defenses. If a person's trying to cross the street to get to the other side, typical scenario, pedestrians are also part of traffic, that is a defense. If a person places anything within these street safety zones, that is an offense. Seeing vehicles parked within what we would define as a street safety zone, that would be an offense. This doesn't include city vehicles, this does not include Text Dot, certainly with all the construction that we have on the interstate, we've seen Text Dot vehicles within these zones. They're supposed to be there, they're doing work. And of course, if there's an emergency, if there's a victim, if you're directed by police, that's what these areas are for, for being able to, to get out of the way, get out of traffic. This is simply a Class C misdemeanor ordinance, just like any other ordinance that this council has enacted, so that the, the impetus here is not to penalize people, the impetus here is for this council, given the opportunity, to let the public understand and know, bad things happen on the roads. Pedestrians versus vehicle, pedestrian always loses. The statistics that Chief Fitzgerald presented to you, we want to see those statistics go down to zero. Best thing that we can do right now is to address the high proportion of incidents that occur at the signalized intersections and move forward with policy that would allow the public to understand, these are not areas you need to be if you're not in a vehicle, and if you're in a vehicle, be mindful of who is around you, what's around you, other vehicles, pedestrians lawfully using intersections to travel from one part of the city to another, bicyclists, cyclists, all need to be part and parcel of keeping aware and being mindful and being safe, and if possible, travel under the speed limit, which would be nice. Answer any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Lewis? Once again, I echo my comments. Thank you for your research on this and the staff working on this very, very important item, and so we'll have it on our agenda for a public hearing item at our meeting in October. Thank you, Sean. All right, council, I'll alert you to let you know that items number two and three on our first briefing, those two items have been tabled due to new requirements as far as posting our agenda for the council meeting. The council agenda had to be posted on September the 5th prior to the Labor Day weekend, actually prior to planning and zoning meeting, which their meeting was held last Tuesday. So those two items have, have been tabled. So we'll now move along to item number four. Ordinance number 2025-139, rezoning on the east 192 feet of Lot 4, Block 4, Urban Heights, located at 3008 Leopard Drive, which is in Ward 2, from Single Family 2 to Single Family 3, Sandra Hudson owner. And we have Michelle Daniel, city staff, to brief the council on, actually, the next four items. So Michelle, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor.
And good evening, council. Uh, so as you said, this is a request to rezone 3008 Leopard Drive from Single Family 2 to Single Family 3. The future land use map designates this property as neighborhood residential. The adjacent zoning is Single Family 2 to the north, south, east, and west, and the adjacent land use is a vacant lot to the west and south, residences to the north, and a school to the east. Planning and zoning recommend approval of this request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from Michelle on this item? If not, we'll move along to item number five. Ordinance number 2025-140, granting a specific use permit to allow the location of a HUD code manufactured home on the east 192 feet of Lot 4, Block 4, Urban Heights, located at 3008 Leopard Drive, once again in Ward 2, Sandra Hudson owner. So once again, items four and five are related. Michelle?
Good evening again. And so, uh, as you said, this is a request for a specific use permit to allow the location of a HUD code manufactured home at 3008 Leopard Drive. Planning and zoning did recommend for approval of this request with the following stipulations for the HUD code manufactured home. That one 2020 or newer HUD code manufactured home be allowed on this property. The manufactured home be tied down, skirted, and underpinned, and that the HUD code manufactured home be used for dwelling purposes only. And that all city codes and ordinances must be followed. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from Michelle on this item? Okay, item number six is ordinance number 2025-141, rezoning on Lot 8, Block 8, Washington Heights, located at 1805 Plant Street, which is in Ward 1, from Single Family 2 to Single Family 3, Patricia Henderson Wade owner. Michelle?
And so this is a request to rezone 1805 Plant Street from Single Family 2 to Single Family 3. Use map designates this property as neighborhood residential, and the adjacent zoning is Single Family 2 to the north, south, east, and west. The adjacent land use is a vacant lot to the south, and residences to the north, east, and west. Planning and zoning approved of this request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Michelle on this item? Okay, very good. We'll now move along to item number, I believe, item number seven. Ordinance number 2025-142, granting a specific use permit to allow the location of a HUD code manufactured home on Lot 8, Block 8, Washington Heights, located at 1805 Plant Street, Ward 1, Patricia Henderson Wade owner. Michelle?
So as you stated, this is a request for a specific use permit for a HUD code manufactured home at 1805 Plant Street. Planning and zoning did recommend for approval of this request with the following stipulations for the manufactured home. That one 2020 or newer HUD code manufactured home be allowed on the property, that the HUD code manufactured home be tied down, skirted, and underpinned, that the manufactured home be used for dwelling purposes only, and that all city ordinances and codes are followed. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Michelle on this item? Okay, very good. Thank you, Michelle. Would like to share with the council also, item number eight, ordinance number 2025-143, that item has been withdrawn. We'll now move along to item number nine, resolution number 2025-144, accepting a donation in the amount of $135,000 from the Texarkana Pickleball Club for a new outdoor pickleball facility at Southwest Center in approving the naming rights to be named Rotary Courts. We have Keith Beeson to brief the council on this item, and I believe we also have with us in the audience, Mr. David Mims, representing the Rotary Clubs of Texarkana for additional information. So Keith, good evening.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor and council. I appreciate your time this evening to talk about this exciting opportunity. Pickleball has, if you've driven down Seventh Street, uh, west on Seventh Street and seen Southwest Center, you've probably seen quite a bit of traffic in the last couple of years, and a lot of that is due to pickleball. There's uh, been a, a large amount of interest, and uh, a lot of interest has gained momentum recently due to the pickleball club. Uh, we're really thankful for their community partnership, and uh, they have worked very hard to, I'll let them, I'll let Mr. Mims, who's the president of the club, give more details, but they've worked very hard on raising money to enhance the facilities as well as, um, you know, raising awareness of the sport. So I would like to introduce Mr. David Mims, president of the Pickleball Club now.
Thank you, Keith. Good evening, Mr. Mims.
Good evening.
Glad to have you with us.
Mayor, council members. Uh, I think you guys have got the resolution, and I'm not going to go into all the details that are on that, but I am, I would like to give you a little information about our pickleball club, and I am wearing two hats, because I'm a Rotarian, and I'm over the pickleball club. This came to be primarily because of a Ro, I'm a Rotarian, and we were looking for a big project. We did Splash Pad, which is huge by a lot of kids, and uh, we were looking for another big project, and I've been picking David Oarsmine for probably the last three, four years, and uh, this kind of fell in our lap. And we love the idea of expanding the, the courts out there, and we think it's a huge need. Uh, the Texarkana Pickleball Club has been around since June 1st, so we had zero members as of June 1st. We have 376 members today. Wow. So in three months, a little over three months, we've grown, and I think your packet shows 366, but we've grown 10 since that packet was. Uh, our dues are $25 a year. We have that low specifically because we don't want to exclude anybody, because just about everybody can afford 25 bucks a year. Uh, our youngest member is age eight, our oldest member is age 84. So, and our average age member kind of reflects what it is in the United States, is about 35 years old. Fastest growing dynamic, uh, as far as age goes, is the 18 to 35. And if you look out there, there's a lot of folks my age, and I'm old as dirt, I'm 67, but it is popular amongst that age group, too. Um, what I proposed to David, and I told him we'd hold two tournaments a year, we want to raise money for that facility to improve it. So we want the proceeds of two tournaments a year to go back in there to keep improving it after the construction, because it won't be done after construction. We want to make it one of the nicer facilities in East Texas, so we can attract people from areas like Little Rock, Dallas, uh, Longview, Shreveport, Bojor. There's, uh, if you get on, uh, Pickleball Brackets or PickleballTournaments.com, you'll see tournaments all around us, and these people travel and play in these tournaments all the time.
David, are those tournaments usually like over the course of a weekend, or?
Correct. They generally start on Friday, and they'll go Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So anyway, the good thing is, like when we play in tournaments, we'll, we get there Friday, and we'll spend the night, Friday night or Sa, and Saturday night sometimes, and then we're going to eat in restaurants the whole time we're there. So it does drive commerce to the city, and that's a great thing, you know? If you go to these courts, and Keith kind of alluded to this, we're kind of a melting pot. When you look at it, you know, the United States is a melting pot, that's what it's described as. But I looked around the other night, and I looked around, and I saw Vietnamese, I saw uh, Indian, black, white, male, female, and we're about 55% female, the club is. So, and then you also see young, you see older, and on one court, we had a whole court of young Mennonite girls in dresses down here. So it was, it, it was.
In the summertime.
Correct. Anyway, um, we have raised 135,000, and like I say, part of that is what the Rotary Clubs are doing, and that's the International Club, Oaklawn, and Wilbur Smith Rotary. Cape Cook Foundation is also a big donor, and as well as Patterson-Troy. And we had several other foundations that stepped up because they believe in the project and um, feel like Texarkana would benefit greatly from it. Okay, that's. Questions?
Questions for David on this matter? Well, I think this is very exciting. Pickleball is a very, very popular sport. One of the advantages of pickleball is it can be utilized by all ages, as you mentioned, young, middle-aged, and the older population as well. And so, um, I think it's a great opportunity, and I certainly want to thank the Rotary Clubs for taking on this project and thinking, you know, thinking to come to the city and asking, what, what can we get involved with, and, and David following up with that. And also appreciate the great work that our local Rotary Clubs do as well, because you all, as you mentioned, you, you funded the installation of the Splash Pad at Spring Lake Park. Also, the Rotary Flag Project is something that I look forward to during various holidays throughout the year, putting the flags out across the city, especially those in the I-30 corridor as traffic comes through Texarkana. I see that we're a very patriotic community and that we support our community. And then also, you all provide the peace officers luncheon in the fall, and then you recognize our educators in the community, I think that's in the springtime. So Rotary Clubs do a lot of great work, and we certainly appreciate everything that the Rotary Clubs do in Texarkana, and we certainly appreciate your leadership with this project and other things you're involved with. You're heavily involved with United Way as well, and so just want to thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you, David. All right, and as I meant to mention to you earlier on reference to our first briefing items, we will have public hearings on all of these items at our next meeting in October. We'll now move along to our public hearings. We do have several public hearings scheduled for this evening. And item number one is resolution number 2025-110, approving the fiscal year 2026 master fee list, including reauthorization of building permit fees. At this time of the public hearing open on this item, if anyone would like to address the council, if you'll please come forward and state your name for the record. Not seeing anyone come forward at this time of the public hearing closed, is there a motion for approval of the resolution? We have a motion by Councilmember Page, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hart, this item pertains to a resolution, so there's not a caption. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Resolution passes. Item number two is resolution number 2025-114, amending the city's purchasing policy manual. At this time of the public hearing open on this item, if anyone would like to address the council, please come forward. At this time of the public hearing closed, is there a motion for approval of this resolution?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hart, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Thompson, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Resolution passes. Item number three and item number four will require roll call votes this evening. Item number three is ordinance number 2025-121, fixing the tax rate and levy in and for the city of Texarkana, Texas for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2026, upon all taxable property in the city of Texarkana, Texas. At this time of the public hearing open on this item, if anyone would like to address the council, please come forward. At this time of the public hearing closed, is there a motion for approval of the ordinance? Motion by Councilmember Page, is there a second? Is that Councilmember David? Is that Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Second by Councilmember Davis. Ms. Evans, the caption, please.
Of the City Council of the City of Texarkana, Texas, fixing the tax rate and levy in and for the city of Texarkana, Texas for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2026, upon all taxable property in the city of Texarkana, Texas, for the purpose of paying the current expenses of the city for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025, and ending September 30th, 2026, sinking fund to retire the principal and interest of the bonded indebtedness and certificates of obligation of the city, rendition and assessment of taxes in accordance with the state law, providing that in the event any provisions of this ordinance be held and invalid, such holdings shall not affect the remaining provisions thereof in conflict herewith and establishing an effective date.
Let me stop right there. Was there any verbiage to read on this item? Okay. Go ahead.
Mayor, this is the item that we have to read, the four motions, and then a roll call vote after each motion.
Okay.
I'll read those real quick.
Okay.
Or not real quick. I move that the city adopt an ad valorem tax rate of .409895 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation of the total taxable property in the Texarkana City jurisdiction on the base valuation of $250,924,138 of the T-1 jurisdiction and on the base valuation of $65,799,167 of the T-2 jurisdiction to fund the city's maintenance and operation expenditures for the next fiscal year ending September 30th, 2026. And I will need a second to that.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Thompson. Is there, okay, we just need a second, and then roll call.
Yes.
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 Mr. Thompson? Ms. Page?
Very good. Item number, we're moving on to four, or we have more on three?
This one is going to be for the interest and sinking component. I move that the city adopt an ad valorem rate, tax rate of .240105 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation of the total taxable property in the Texarkana City jurisdiction and on the base valuation of $250,924,138 of the T-1 jurisdiction and on the base valuation of $65,799, I'm sorry, $65,799,167 of the T-2 jurisdiction for the purpose of maintaining an interest and sinking fund, which will pay, with which to pay the debt service for the next fiscal year ending September 30th, 2026. And we'll need a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Medder. Ms. Evans, roll call, please.
Mr. Medder?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Matlock?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Very good.
And this one is for the TERS 1 component. I move that the city adopt an ad valorem rate, tax rate of .65000 on each $100 of assessed valuation of the total taxable property in the T-1 jurisdiction above the base valuation of $250,924,138 for the purpose of providing a public infrastructure and to pay the interest and retire the principal of the valid bonded and warranted indebtedness and the certificates of obligation of the city of Texarkana, Texas for projects within the T-1 jurisdiction for the next fiscal year ending September 30th, 2026. And that will require a second.
Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Page. Ms. Evans, roll call, please.
Mr. Medder?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Matlock?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
One more?
And we have for the TERS 2 component, I move that the city adopt an ad valorem tax rate of .65000 on each $100 of assessed valuation of the total taxable property on the T-2 jurisdiction above the base valuation of $65,799,167 for the purpose of providing public infrastructure and to pay the interest and retire the principal of the valid bonded and warrant indebtedness and certificates of obligation of the city of Texarkana, Texas for projects within the T-2 jurisdiction for the next fiscal year ending September 30th, 2026. We'll need a second.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was a tie, all right, between.
A yield.
Okay, you yield. Okay, all right. So, second by Councilmember Hart. Ms. Evans, roll call, please.
Mr. Medder?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Matlock?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Very good. That concludes item three.
I think I have one, this is the last one.
Okay, well, hurry up.
So, this is. This is for the consideration of the ordinance. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .65000, which is effectively a 7.65% increase in the tax rate. And that requires a second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hart. Ms. Evans, roll call, please.
Mr. Medder?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Matlock?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson? Ms. Page?
Okay, so we're three with number three. All right, we're going to move along to item number four. Ordinance number 2025-112, ratifying the recently adopted budget that contains a property tax rate that raises more total property taxes than the previous year. Note, as of the posting date of this agenda, the reference property tax proposed for the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget is a tax rate of .6500 per $100 of assessed valuation, the same tax rate adopted for fiscal year 2024-2025. Is there a motion for approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Matlock. I'm sorry, public hearing. We need to have a public, back up just a second. I'm sorry, Ms. Matlock. At this time, I declare the public hearing open on this item. If anyone would like to address the council, please come forward. Okay, at this time, I declare the public hearing closed. And Ms. Matlock, you once again confirm your motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Matlock. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Davis. Ms. Evans, the caption, please.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Texarkana, Texas, ratifying the recently adopted budget that contains a property tax rate that raises more total property taxes than the previous year and establishing an effective date.
Just need to vote on that. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call vote, that's right.
Another one.
I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Medder?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Matlock?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Roll call vote is unanimous. All right, does that take care of number four? Okay, very good. All right, moving along to item number five, ordinance number 2025-124, rezoning Lot 19, Block Six, H.S. Janes Headright Survey, A-306, located in the 1300 block of Letter Carrier Drive in Ward Two, from Single Family Two to Single Family Three, Alvin Battle owner. At this time, I declare the public hearing open on this item. If anyone would like to address the council, please come forward. Sir, if you'll please state your name for the record.
I'm Alvin Battle.
All right, Mr. Battle, we're glad to have you with us this evening.
Thank you for having me. I just wanted to get this property rezoned to be able to start my family. That's it. I'm expecting my first kid this year, so.
Congratulations.
On one place.
Any questions for Mr. Battle? Okay, all right, thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. Public hearing is still open on this item. If anyone else would like to address the council, please come forward. Yes, sir? Yeah, we're going to, we'll, let's see, we have one on six on the special, specific use permit. Yes, we will. Yes, we'll get to that in just a second. We're still on five. Yeah, thank you. Public hearing is still open on this item. If anyone else would like to address the council, please come forward. At this time, I declare the public hearing closed. Is there a motion for approval of the ordinance? Motion by Councilmember Page. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Matlock. Ms. Evans, the caption, please.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Texarkana, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Texarkana, Texas by rezoning on Lot 19, Block Six, H.S. Janes HRS, A-306, located in the 1300 block of Letter Carrier Drive in the city of Texarkana, Bowie County, Texas, from Single Family Two to Single Family Three, containing a repellent clause, containing a severability clause, and establishing an effective date.
All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? No. The ordinance passes. Item number six is ordinance number 2025-125, granting a specific use permit to allow the location of a HUD code manufactured home on Lot 19, Block Six, H.S. Janes Headright Survey, A-306, located in the 1300 block of Letter Carrier Drive, Ward Two, Alvin Battle owner. At this time, I declare the public hearing open on this item. If anyone would like to address the council, if you'll please come forward. Mr. Battle, if you'll please once again restate your name for the record.
Alvin Battle.
All right, Mr. Battle, glad to have you back.
If anybody has any questions or anything.
Any questions for Mr. Battle? Okay, very good. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, public hearing is still open on this item. If anyone else would like to come forward, please do so at this time. At this time, I declare the public hearing closed. Is there a motion for approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hart. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember, I think I heard Mr. Councilmember Medder. All right, Ms. Evans, the caption, please.
The City Council of the City of Texarkana, Texas, amending the zoning map showing the location, boundary, and use of certain property by the granting of specific use permit number S-811 to allow the location of a HUD code manufactured home on Lot 19, Block Six, H.S. Janes HRS, A-306, located in the 1300 block of Letter Carrier Drive in the city of Texarkana, Bowie County, Texas, containing a repellent clause, containing a severability clause, and establishing an effective date.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. The ordinance passes unanimously. This concludes our public hearings portion of the agenda. We'll now move along to the city manager's report. Dr. Orr?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have just a few updates to pass along to you tonight. First off, Texarkana has been recognized again as one of 49 cities in the state to receive the 2025 Planning Excellence Award. This award highlights our commitment to high-quality planning, community engagement, and professional development. It will be recognized at the APA State Planning Conference in College Station on October 24th. So, just want to congratulate our Planning and Community Development Department, our Development Services Team, and our Planning and Zoning Commission on this award. Also, a couple of things on lead and copper. So, we've discussed the lead and copper rule from the EPA, and there's an additional rollout. It's considered Phase Two of this process. And so, as part of Phase Two, TWU will be sending out letters with instructions and release forms for staff to inspect areas near the meter box. And so, they also have additional information on their website. We have set up an email specifically for this project as well as a direct line. And so, our key impact for residents will be that these inspections will be limited to the exterior only of the home around the meter box, but it will be on the private and the public side of the meter box. And so, this project also will extend nearly two years as we work through this meter identification. Finally, we also have a Tiny Homes Workshop that was held last Tuesday here at City Hall. And city staff held that workshop with our Planning and Zoning Commission. This is part of our 2024 IBC International Building Code Updates. And so, our building chief official, Sean Maxi, presented an overview of sort of the development standards that will be coming into play with the new IBC adoption. And so, we're researching additional information, and we'll have a proposed ordinance for council consideration at a future meeting. And then just finally, a couple of save the dates. First off, a water workshop that we've talked about with Riverbend will take place on Monday night, September 29th, at 6:00 p.m. And then also another save the date for National Night Out, Tuesday, October 7th, with more information to come from the department. And finally, just want to congratulations to councilmembers Page and Davis on your new terms, and we look forward to working with you for a new set of terms.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Orr. Now move along to administrative comments. Do we have any comments this evening by the council? No comments, all right. Any final comments from staff? All right, at this time, the city council is going to be going into closed session. The city council will convene in a closed session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Government Code. Section 551.071, consultation with attorney. 551.072, real property. Section 551.087, economic development negotiations. And for everyone here and those watching on live stream, the council does not anticipate taking any action after.
One more section, Mayor.
Pardon me?
The page break. There was one more closed session item after the.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. I did not get that far. So, we do have additional item for closed session, Section 551.074, personnel matters. And then, once again, for everyone here and those watching on live stream, the council does not anticipate taking any action after closed session other than reconvening into open session and adjourning the meeting. And at this time, we will end the live stream. Once again, want to thank everyone for being here with us this evening. And hold on just one second. So, I see in the back, we have an Eagle Scout. Is that right? Pardon me? Live scout. Would you please stand and state your name, and we'd like to recognize you this evening. Jacob Remfro? Okay, and where do you go to school? Homeschool. Okay, well, good. Well, you're very active. You have a lot of patches on your soul there. So, anyway, well, thank you very much for taking the time to be here with us this evening. We really appreciate your being here. Okay? At this time, we will go into closed session. Once again, thank you all for being here this evening.